Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome all members and guests to the November 4th, 2025 Public Hearing Committee meeting and remind everyone that our meetings are web-streamed and televised. So if you could all just take a moment right now and check and make sure your phones are on silent, that would be greatly appreciated. For those attending virtually, welcome, please keep yourself muted, turn on your camera and use the Microsoft staff, use the Microsoft raise hand feature icon to be called upon and remove it when you're finished. With that, I call November 4th, 2025 Public Hearing Committee meeting to order. Role call this afternoon. I believe Counselor Van Andry, she is going to try and join virtually but not sure of her participation. Counselor Huffman sends her regrets and Counselor Michele is joining us in person today. He is just running slightly behind. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest today? Counselor Duffy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I will declare a pecuniary interest related to item 4.2, which is 129 Queensway West. My employer has a working relationship with the applicant.
Perfect, thank you very much. Anyone else? We do have one requested addition to our agenda. Are there any other council member changes? With that then, I'd look for a mover and a seconder to include a deputation from Greg Jones, SkyDev, to our agenda. Moved by Counselor Columbus, seconded by Counselor Brunton, all in favor? That's carried, thanks. And then a amendment overall to the, sorry, approval to the amended agenda. Moved by Counselor Van Passen, seconded by Counselor Duffy, all in favor? That's carried, we're low on members, nobody can get up and get a coffee or go to the bathroom. We'll lose quorum. I now officially open the public meetings authorized to be held under the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, and county policies. Please be advised that under the Ontario Planning Act, as amended by the province, only specified persons and public bodies, as defined in the Planning Act, may appeal a decision of Norfolk County to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Third parties or anyone who is not a specified person or public body does not have the right to appeal a decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, to preserve the ability to be a party to any appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal, third parties or general members of the public are required to make comments today or provide us with written submissions. If you have any wish to appeal any future decision of council, you must go on the record here today. Welcome, Counselor Michele, thanks for joining. With that, we'll jump right into item 4.1 on the agenda, which is the proposed closure and conveyance of Park King Street South, which is Staff Report, CDS 25076. Ms. Arbisher.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of committee. Report, CDS 25-076, is being presented to the Public Hearings Committee for information purposes to allow the public an opportunity to express concerns, comments, objections, or support with regards to the request by the applicants for the permanent closure and conveyance of the unopened portion of Park King Street South Plan 139 adjacent to their property. The report provides the nature of the request by the applicants along with additional related details. Realty staff did not receive any public input with regards to the proposed closure. A further report will be presented to council at a later date for the purposes of a decision. Staff are here today to hear from the public and to answer any questions council members and the public may have related to the requested road closure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Questions from committee to staff? Counselor Columbus.
Yes, to staff. With respect to this written report, just wonder, there are many King Streets in urban areas within the county, and I just wonder if you could put Port Ryersy right in there? The only place I found it was right at the very end and under a diagram, I guess, so it would probably help.
Any other questions? Seeing none, okay, is there anyone here in council that wishes to speak to this item? Is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak to this report? Someone wish to move the staff recommendation? Counselor Van Passen, seconded by Counselor Duffy. Any debate, discussion, all in favor? That's carried, thanks. Okay, Counselor Duffy, thanks for your declaration earlier. We'll move on to 4.2, which is Staff Report, CDS 25078, 129 Queensway East, Simcoe.
Through the mayor, this application is seeking a zoning bylaw amendment to amend a special provision preventing the full use of the subject lands. The subject lands are located on the north side of Queensway East within the shopping center commercial official plan designation in Simcoe. The lands are the former site of the Zeller's store and its associated parking area with frontage on Queensway East. The surrounding uses are mainly commercial with the larger SkyDev residential development to the east. The land is currently zoned shopping center commercial with special provision 14.611. It is proposed to amend special provision 14.611 to allow the full shopping center commercial uses on the site whilst retaining department store as an approved use. The special provision restricts the use of the land as currently written to department store only. With this provision amended, the land can be used to its full potential with all uses allowed within the CSC zone, including gyms, restaurants, shops, et cetera, as well as retaining the current department store use. Report, CDS 25078, contains the technical comments in Attachment C. No public comments have been received to this point, and any technical studies will be part of any site plan applications for the development. As previously noted, the special provision was added in 1997 when the town of Simcoe was trying to prevent development along the Queensway in favor of town-centered development. As this is no longer an issue, the amendment of special provisions 14.611 will increase the number of uses for the former Zeller's building and site and any new development on the subject lands, helping to support local businesses and the local economy. As such, staff recommend report, CDS 25078, for development applications at NPL 2025-179 be received for information, and that any comments received as part of the statutory public meeting will be considered in a future staff recommendation report. Thank you, and I'm here if there's any questions.
Thanks very much. Questions from committee? I'll just take this opportunity to clarify on the public record that that's the entire parcel, that's not the building, that's the entirety of the lot, they're good to go.
Through you. It's basically half of, if you look at the Superstore and the Zeller's site, it's the half, including the road over to the boundary with SkyDev.
Okay. No other questions? All right, this is the addition to our agenda, so we have a registered deputation speaker virtually with us, Greg Jones from SkyDev. Greg, if you're on the line, you have five minutes, you can begin whenever you're ready. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Well, thanks very much. It's my pleasure to join you today. I can't, your screen's really small on my screen, is that your worship in the chair there? Yes, okay, through your worship, members of council. Just wanted to say hi. Greg Jones, SkyDev, part of the Skyline Group of Companies, building 200 rental apartments next door, many of you joined us for our groundbreaking. I just wanted to call in and express support for adding more commercial uses, having a walkable neighborhood where you can walk and get your groceries and walk and go to gym and whatever else they decide to put here, it's, we're all for it, and just wanted to say we're supportive.
Great, thanks so much, Greg, we appreciate it. A mover and a seconder, pleased to receive the deputation as information. Counselor Columbus, seconded by Counselor Duffy, all in fa, sorry, Brunton, sorry, Counselor Brunton, all in favor? Carried. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak to this file today? Again, this is 129 Queensway East. Anyone on the line? Okay, we'll get the staff recommendation put up on the screen for us. It's there before you to receive this development application as information, and any comments received as part of the statutory public meeting will be considered in a future recommendation staff report. Sir, mover and a seconder? Counselor Van Passen moved, seconded by Counselor Michele. Debate, discussion, all in favor? Carried, thank you.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, it just took a second to get the presentation up on the screen there. So I wanted to begin by welcoming everyone here today, this afternoon, for the public hearing today. For this application, it's for a draft plan of subdivision and a zoning bylaw amendment. This project was previously heard here in council chambers earlier in January of this year. The materials that were prepared as part of this presentation were in response to the feedback received at the public hearing in January. So as indicated, this application is for a draft plan of subdivision and a zoning bylaw amendment for the property identified as Rule Number 40101538715, also known as the Woodway Trails Phase III. This parcel does not have a civic address at this time, and the proposal is for a subdivision consisting of approximately 490 dwellings. Oh, I think it went over. So the property is located in the urban area of Simcoe, and it's approximately 20 hectares or 50 acres in size. The surrounding land uses are predominantly residential wooded area and currently agricultural, are used as an agricultural field. There's an open space cemetery to the north, there's hazard land on the property itself as well as adjacent to the property, there's agricultural land to the south and forested area, as well as the Simcoe wastewater treatment facility that's located adjacent along the western boundary of the development. So the proposed subdivision is also an existing, an extension of the existing subdivision known as Woodway Trails. So the site is designated as urban residential with a small portion designated as hazard land in the Norfolk County official plan, and the property is currently zoned as development in the Norfolk County zoning bylaw, and a portion of it is also zoned hazard land as So as indicated, the draft plan of subdivision consists of roughly 495 residential dwellings. That consists of 112 single detached units, 169 street townhouse units, 154 dwelling units that are proposed within Block 6 and 7 for future condominiums, and Block 3 for future mid-rise building or townhouse condos that contain approximately 60 units. There was a phasing plan that was submitted with the second submission, and it proposes a four-phased approach, Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4. For the number of units within the four phases, it's roughly approximately 111 units per Phase 1. Phase 2 consists of roughly 54 units, Phase 3 is 176 units, and Phase 4 is roughly 154 units. For this application, a zoning bylaw amendment is also required to amend not only the zoning designation on the property from development zone to various urban residential zonings, that would be R1B, R4, and R6, but also to add special provisions for building setbacks and other lot provisions such as minimum lot frontage, minimum exterior side yard setbacks. For more detail regarding the specific amendments, those can be found within the corresponding staff report, CDS 25042, and can also be found in Attachments B and G to the staff report. So for this application, there were a large list of technical documents that were required for a complete application. That includes Plan Justification Report, Functional Servicing Brief, Stormwater Management Report, Traffic Impact Study, Land Use Compatibility Study, as well as an Environmental Impact Study. So these, the application was circulated for comments amongst county agencies, and staff received technical comments that can be found in Attachment C. So staff have outlined the following items for preliminary consideration. Housing, obviously, it's a large number of units, and I've provided the breakdown. So parking, the proposed development appears to meet the parking requirements outlined in Section 4 of the zoning bylaw. Staff have requested and received an on-street parking plan that outlines approximately that there's about 165 parking spaces available for on-street parking spaces, and that's roughly a rate of 0.33 spaces per unit. In regards to servicing, it's proposed to be fully municipally serviced, and there's ongoing discussions regarding servicing easement, accessibility, and emergency services. So it's been identified that there's one primary entrance into, in and out of the subdivision, primarily along Donnelly Drive South. There is also an emergency access vehicle, an emergency access that's used for emergency vehicles at the northwest corner of the cemetery, and there's also a proposed access around the stormwater management pond, of the existing stormwater management pond. Staff have identified concerns regarding this specifically from the fire department. In the second submission, a gravel access road is proposed at the end of the Trillium Way connecting to the wastewater treatment facility as a proposed secondary entrance to the subdivision. Staff are working with the applicant and adjacent landowners to explore potential to provide a second access via another means. In regards to traffic, there's a traffic impact study that's been sent for peer review, and further comments are pending. Regarding transportation and emergency services, the proposal for the draft plan of subdivision continues to rely on Donnelly Drive South, and staff continue dialogue with the developer on regarding concerns of potentially overloading Donnelly Drive South, and that's a portion of the reason for the peer review on the traffic impact study. Regarding the land use compatibility, they provided a land use compatibility study, and it provided a list of recommendations, and it was outlined that based on the assessment conducted, that there's proposed to be no adverse impact on the subject site, given that the proposed development is adequately serviced or separated from surrounding major facilities and is proposed or expected to be compatible with the surrounding land uses. In regards to the significant woodlot, the proposed development abuts the significant woodlot on the west side. County staff and the applicant have worked together to determine in terms of the use of best management strategies for water quality control, as well as use of directional boring to avoid impacts on the construction of the sanitary trunk sewer. So those would be components that would be considered as conditions for the draft plan of subdivision conditions. And in regards to parkland, so the second submission provides a park in the northwest corner of the subject lands. The proposed park abuts the significant woodlot area. The proposed size for the park is approximately 5.2% of the developable area of the entire subject lands. So the portions of the property that are designated as significant woodlot do not count towards that 5% and are separate, but they are also being dedicated to the municipality. In regards to public comments, staff have received several public comments for this application. I've attached what was received as Attachment D, and I've also provided hard copies to members of the council in person regarding additional comments that have come in from members of the public. But to summarize the list of public comments, I've identified 10 overlapping concerns, them being the primary access in and out of the subdivision, the one being the main road via Donnelly Drive South, the increase in traffic, as well as the increase in, the increase in impact on on-street parking as well as safety, concerns about emergency services having appropriate access, parking and street congestion, drainage considerations, concerns about congestion during building phases, the construction traffic, the congestion during traffic, construction of a temporary access as well as an exit road for construction vehicles, concerns about not having an appropriate park and residence in the subdivision to utilize, whether that be the park or park size or park amenities, and stormwater management considerations for both the existing and the proposed development. Further to this, the applicant recently held a developer information session last week on October 29th at Fanshawe College to provide an additional opportunity to share information about the proposal to the public. Invitations were hand-delivered via the agent and their team, and this invitation can be found as Attachment I to this report. And in addition, last week, staff received an updated draft plan of subdivision concept and phasing plan that's also been printed off and provided via hard copy to the members of council. An update in regards to what those, a high-level overview of the changes, the updated concept provides a, provides a future roadblock at the end of Trillium Way, an updated park space of 5.2%. It removed the trail adjacent to the Oakwood Cemetery behind lots 1 through 25 to the north and included revised unit counts, and those revised unit counts included reductions. So at a very high level, in terms of the total units being reduced, the updated draft plan comparatively reduces the unit counts by a total of four, and so that includes a reduction of one single detached dwelling and a reduction of three single, street townhouse dwellings. So in total, the draft plan has changed from 495 total dwellings to 491 total dwellings. In regards to the phasing plan, a four-phased, excuse me, a four-phased approach was previously proposed, being Phases 1, 2, 3, and 4, and now the phasing plan has changed to be 1A and 1B, which would essentially be Phases 1 and 2, and 2A and 2B are considered, are replicable to Phases 3 and 4 respectively. So in conclusion, the proposal is for a draft plan of subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment to develop approximately 490 residential dwellings, three condo blocks in the urban area of Simcoe. The zoning amendment is to change the zoning from development zone to urban residential zonings, being R1B, R4, and R6. At this time, staff are recommending that the staff report be received for information, and that any comments received at this meeting be considered as part of the public process and will be considered in the future recommendation council report. That concludes staff's comments. Thank you for your time.
Questions from committee? Quite a few to unpack there. Counselor Van Passen, Brunton, and then Duffy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure I got this straight in my head here. What we are looking at today is to approve the entire, changes to the entire property, but with the understanding that there's still a lot of discussion to take place, and we would only allow this construction of homes in Phase 1 till we work out some other details, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of today's meeting is strictly for information purposes. There's no recommendation of approval or denial or any recommendations being recommended today.
But if I read all the little side reports, that's a gist I got that they sort of, they still got some details to work out, that's coming in the report later, but the intent would be to get approval of all these little zoning amendments and things like that, but construction would only start on Phase 1 once the entirety of the thing is approved, and then it gradually gets built, right?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Counselor Brunton.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. My question, I just, and I missed it right at the end there, this map I'm looking at, where you have Phase 1A and Phase 1B, that's now one phase, am I right? Or is that going to be two phases?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So the north is divided into, it's technically two phases. I'll let the developers speak to that in terms of their plan of action, but the way that I've understood it is two separate phases, the north being Phase 1 and the south being Phase 2.
Okay, again, Phase 1A and Phase 1B is one phase then?
Through you, Madam Mayor.
2A and 2B are one phase?
Correct.
Okay, I just wondered why they're divided on the map I'm looking at here. Anyways, maybe we'll get clarification on that.
Well, I'll let you pose that to Mr. Valley when he comes up.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Duffy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Fabian, thanks for this. I wonder, and actually, I would just say that I appreciate the work that's taken place between planning staff, the developer, from when this sort of has initially come up to where we're at now. There's been certainly some considerable improvements, which is good, not sure that we're all the way there yet, but moving in the right direction. You touched on a few things that I think are very second nature to you, but not necessarily to all of us and to those in the gallery too, so I just want to maybe unpack a few of the comments there. The majority of the issues, I think there are four that really stand out to me. The first was the construction access, and you talked about a servicing easement. Can you just sort of outline what that may look like in this context then?
Through the mayor to Counselor Duffy. So the servicing, the construction access is still not determined as well if it was to move forward. There's options for it to go through the sewage treatment plant. There's the potential it could go down south through the other lands that are not yet developed. It's still a lot of conversations taking place, but it is the county's understanding that it's preferred to not be driving through the first phase of Woodway Trail that's already constructed. And the servicing easement is also proposed at this time over the main, I can't remember the street it's called, but the one that goes south down into the undeveloped lands to provide water sewer for future development.
And so the mechanism then to ensure that there is a construction access is within the conditions of the draft plan?
Through the mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay. On the issue of the second access route, I understand there's been some discussions that have taken place, but as of right this minute, where does it stand?
Through the mayor, the traffic impact study is being peer reviewed right now, so we don't have a definitive answer at this time about whether it's definitely required or not. We do think it is required at some point, it's just a matter of at which phase.
Perfect. I appreciate that you probably are reading my mind. My next question is related to the peer review. Can we explain what that means and what the outcome may potentially be?
Sure, through the mayor. So studies are often peer reviewed when we receive them and we just want a second opinion to ensure that we're on the same page, basically. So we trust that Paradigm probably did things correctly, but it's kind of just an assurance for us to ensure that what they say is verified by a peer, so another traffic engineer. So they will say, yes, we agree with what they've said, or no, we don't.
And will it take into consideration all of the development in that section and also the property then on the corner of Victoria and Donnelly, moderate rise building?
Through the mayor. So I don't think it would take into account the one at Victoria and Donnelly, but the other development to the south, yes, it would take that into consideration.
Thank you. And on the parkland, it's not a location that I really would have thought of, to be perfectly honest. I think there's probably a better location for it. Does staff have an opinion as to where it is at this point?
Through the mayor. At this time, we've worked a lot with the developer and with park staff, and we are satisfied with the location.
And just to be clear, though, it is the, from the developer's perspective, they are providing the land at 5 point, so it's 5.2% of the development, so that's all they need to do, it is they're just giving us the It is they're just giving us the land. If there's any playground equipment, et cetera, to be built on it, that is on Norfolk County, right?
Through the mayor, that's correct. I believe that would be DC-funded. I'm not 100% sure, but yes, they would be just giving us the land.
I wonder, Madam Mayor, if we could just ask for a comment from perhaps Engineering, since they're present today, on when that may happen, because it is one of the things I hear about the most in that community.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. If this area follows the timelines that I think it might follow along, they might get their draft plan approval, let's say in 2026, at which time the land would be conveyed over to the county. I have not looked into the park's budget, but let's go with the understanding that there hasn't been a project assigned to putting equipment here. There would need to be that added to the budget. Design work could most likely take place in 2027 for outfitting for the park and delivered in 2028. Given that the area is probably going to undergo pretty significant servicing in the area, you know, despite the land being conveyed over, it's probably not an area where you'd want to access the park during that heavy servicing component, so 2028 is probably the most realistic and even aggressive timeline to have a park and a park that is outfitted.
Thank you. And then if I can also, just since we're on engineering, Mr. Lambert's here, Phase 1A and Phase 1B, so some of the, I realize obviously we're having the traffic studies peer-reviewed, but I guess my question would be related to Donnelly, since it is currently planned to be the only route at present. Can it handle that amount of traffic flow from 1A and 1B? There's what, 111 units in 1A? I don't remember what B is.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. There's been some preliminary assessment work as to what Donnelly could support by way of, I'll say, early phases, and at the moment it looks like Phase 1A and 1B could be sufficiently supported by just Donnelly, and then after that, there would be a need for another access point to be delivered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Duffy. Any other questions to staff? Counselor Brunton.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I guess, and I'm still a little confused with the phasing, but does our use-it-or-lose-it, and I guess maybe this question is for Darnell, is our use-it-or-lose-it policy for water and wastewater, does it apply to this development?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. Yes, it would. It would apply to all developments. When they get their draft plan approval, you know, the allocation would move to a more firm position, but once they actually register, let's say they register their Phase 1, that would be an absolute commitment, because it's written in an agreement, that there's sufficient water supply to support that. You know, the latter phases, 1B, 2A, 2B, because they're a little bit unknown, you know, each time that those would come in, there'd be a verification process to be done.
So it would not apply to, like, I'm still not clear on, like, Phase 1A and 1B, that's one phase, we've been told, correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. That's what we've been informed. I'm used to seeing Phase 1 being called its phase and Phase 1B being its own phase. It would, I think the question is best put to the applicant on how they actually plan to register those phases.
So whatever way it comes out, that Phase 1 is, if I could use that word, the use-it-or-lose-it will apply to that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the counselor. The use-it-or-lose-it policy component actually would apply to the draft plan condition. It would be wrote right in there that while there is allocation, it's still subject to when the actual phasing gets registered, any particular phase.
Okay, thank you.
This feels like a good time to maybe switch over to Mr. Valley. It's his map that you're referencing, and I'm not sure if it's in your presentation, but then we could get it up on the screens if it is, so let's do that. Welcome. Whenever you're ready, five minutes. Take it away.
Thank you very much, your worship, members of council and members of the public. My name is John Valley. I'm here today to talk to you about roadway trails. If we could go to the next slide. We've been operating and reviewing this development application now for almost two years. We're hoping to come back to you next month in December for a decision meeting, which would approve our application for subdivision and for zoning. Next slide, please. This is our current draft plan. My purpose here today is to show you the changes and modifications that we've made to this plan over the past few months. We've listened a lot to the community, to council, members of the public, staff, and we've reacted. And my hope is to show you very quickly those very highlights, and with the idea that council will ask me questions, because I only have five minutes. So next slide, please. The first thing that we recognize is the need for a park. This was loud and clear. So we've created what I'll call a green space node up in the northwest corner of the plan. It comprises of dedicated park space. It's also a woodlot. We're almost three and a half acres of land there. There's more green space to be found down lower in the plan in Phase 2, but we have responded with a nice, green, healthy plan for park. Next slide, please. We've been asked, how big is this park? What does it look like? Well, Chapel Street Park in Simcoe is a very good comparison. It's about 1 hectare in size, and as you can see, this total node would be about 1.4 if you include the woodlot and the park together. Next slide, please. Obviously, the woodlot there needs to be protected. We have done an EIS that, there was a terms of reference done, the study has been completed, that's been tabled with Norfolk County staff, and we believe we've addressed all the issues there. Next slide, please. Street parking has been an issue with the residents. There's a lot of talk about congestion on the street and the fact that in the old plan we had a scenario where we had townhouses facing each other across the street. Therefore, we've gone away from that. We've eliminated that as a thing in the plan. Now we have street townhouses on one side, but single-family dwellings on the other to create more opportunity for street parking on all the streets. And the other thing that we've done, by creating this park land over on the west side of the plan, we've created an opportunity for 25 on-street parking spots along the frontage of that park. So what this does is it provides an overflow for people, for visitors, for whatever, for people who maybe own more cars than they have room for in their driveway, but 25 cars goes a long way to alleviate that congestion. Next slide, please. Traffic has been obviously a big concern here, Donnelly Drive. I'm not going to go into the details of this slide. If council has questions, we can circle back to it, but suffice it to say, we've done a lot of traffic studies here. And if I could go to the next slide. Our traffic consultant believes that Donnelly Drive can handle the traffic. County staff are not convinced. That's why we're out for a peer review. But let's, we're just backing up a little bit here. We just heard Mr. Lambert confirm that what we're calling Phase 1, Mr. Brunton, Phase 1 is 1 and 1A combined, that that traffic can be accommodated in Donnelly Drive, so that's what we're asking for. Let's go ahead with Phase 1A, 1A, 1B, as access to Donnelly Drive, and let's not do Phase 2 until we get a connection made to either Deco or Ireland or Victoria. That is the proposal that we have on the table right now. Next slide, please. There's also been a lot of discussion about construction access. On the map, you can see sort of an orange line across the bottom. This is our proposal to create a construction access from the subdivision over to the driveway at the sewage plant. We've talked with the landowners about that. I think that satisfies the concerns in that regard. Next slide, please. So what would we end up with for access overall? For Phase 1, which is the blue area on the map, we would have Donnelly Drive as the main access. We'd have the existing cemetery emergency access as a second, and we'd have a third construction access, which could also be an emergency access if needed. So you'd have three ways to get in and out of Phase 1 in that emergency situation. Next slide, please. When we go into Phase 2, we would add to that either a road to Victoria Street, or a road to Deco Road, or a road to Ireland. And that would require the cooperation of our friends and the developers to the south, but we believe that we have a good relationship with them and we can work that out. This is what the community has asked for, is this road to Deco or Ireland, and that's what we're willing to provide as a condition on our second phase. Next slide.
Just under a minute remaining.
Thank you. The setback from the sewage plant, your planner mentioned to you that this has been resolved. County has established the limit of their expansion for the sewage plant. We need 150-meter setback. We've achieved that. I don't think there's any further concern there. Next slide, please. So cooperation with the landowners to the south. We do note that there's been a change in ownership structure in the property immediately to the south of us. Live Communities is now on the scene in a joint venture. They are, we've met with them just last week. We've met with Calabrecks. There seems to be a lot of good discussion occurring there about cost sharing and cooperation between the group. I know I'm almost out of time.
Sorry, Mr. Valley, I got to cut you off, but I'm sure a council member will jump in here for you. Counselor Duffy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, Mr. Valley, please tell me more about this cooperation. I would love to learn more, because it is an area that is of great concern to me.
Thank you. So we did have a meeting last week. Calabrecks, you may know that name. They are a GTA developer. They own the former hublands. These were the lands that Norfolk County purchased from, ironically, from our client owned part of those lands in partnership. They were sold to the county. The county then sold them to Calabrecks. So they were at the table, and Live Communities was also at the table. They are the owners of the lands immediately to the south of us. They are in a joint venture with Peter Labarras on those lands. So we had Calabrecks, we had Live, we had my client, we had engineering staff from the county and planning staff. There's a need and a requirement for cooperation amongst these three developers, and that's clear and obvious. And everyone at the table is in agreement that there needs to be some cooperation, there needs to be cost sharing. For example, for Live Communities, say to advance, they need to put sewers and water mains across our client's land to gain access to servicing. Similarly, we have committed to you today that we won't go ahead with our second phase until we can get a road to perhaps Victoria Street, Donnelly, or Deco Road or Ireland, which would require us going across their land. So there needs to be cooperation and synergy between all these developers. I think the takeaway from that meeting was that this is very doable. Of course, we made it clear to the other parties that without draft plan approval, we can't commit to anything, but we're hoping we'll get that approval from this council in December, and then those negotiations can start in earnest.
Thank you for that, and, Madam Mayor, with your permission, I may continue. On the second road, I do think it's necessary. I mean, I think there's 370-something homes over there already. We're looking to add, you know, 100-plus in the first phase here, so I guess the question, I probably know the answer, but I'd like to hear it from you. Why can't this collaboration, at least on a road, take place sooner or now?
So the collabor, I'm assuming you mean like a road to Deco?
Correct.
So a road to Deco is challenging from a timeline perspective for a number of reasons. First off, we don't own the land, so we need to cooperate with the person in this joint venture with Live Communities and Peter Labarras that do own the land. So that is a challenge one. Challenge two is, we're aware that there's a number of archaeological sites that have identified on that property that need to be further investigated, cleaned, perhaps excavated. Stage 1, 2, 3, 4 studies, we don't know, but there are archaeological sites identified there that would need to be cleared before we could do any road building in the area. There's also other studies and whatnot that would need to be done before a road could be built. The other challenge, of course, is that our friends to the south at Live Communities are roughly two years behind us in the process. They have just applied for a pre-con meeting, we've been told. It's taken us two years to get from our pre-con to today, so they're about two years behind us. Without an approved draft plan, which defines the geometry of the roads within their plan of subdivision, it's highly unlikely that they would want us to go on their property and be building roads and so on, or that they would allow a cooperative effort to build roads before they have a draft plan approval. People asked about a temporary road. What if you just went in and built gravel, a temporary road, and then, you know, that became the ultimate road later? Well, there's a logistics challenge there. We go in, we scrape the top sill off, we put the gravel on, we build this road, and then if, if we get lucky and it's in the right spot, then when we go to actually develop the subdivision, all that gravel is now garbage, because we have to dig under the road to put the sewers and the water mains and all that stuff. So all that expense of that would be wasted. It would absolutely be money down the drain. So the logistics of trying to coordinate a road to Deco in advance of the Deco Road property getting draft plan approval, those logistics are, I'm going to say, insurmountable. However, this is why we are saying to you, give us our draft plan approval, allow us to proceed with Phase 1 to Donnelly Drive, because we know Donnelly Drive has the capacity to accept that, and we are acknowledging, regardless of what our traffic study says, that we can do it all with Donnelly Drive. We're putting that aside and just saying, we want to work with the county, we want to work with the neighbors. We're willing to postpone Phase 2 until we can get one of those connections to Deco or to Ireland. So that is where our developer is coming from, in that he's confident enough to make that statement and make that offer to the county, that we will be able to work a solution with the neighbors to the south. Without it, his second phase doesn't go ahead. He's confident in that statement that he can work a deal with them, and in the meantime, it lets him get going with house building over the next few years while Live Communities is getting their draft plan approved.
Thank you. For me, it's vitally important that that comes together, and truthfully, sooner rather than later. I appreciate the understanding of the timeline. Speaking of, can you walk me through, so you've laid out the phasing for 1A and 1B and 2A and B, what do you think that timeline looks like? Construction timeline on Phase, shall we say, 1A and B?
Fair enough. So if we were to get draft plan approval from Norfolk in December, that draft plan approval will probably come with upwards of 80, 100 conditions to be satisfied before we can register a plan of subdivision. So it would take us, I'm going to say, at least a year to clear those draft plan conditions, to do detailed design, to get them to Mr. Lambert and his team, to get those things approved. So let's assume we can do that in a year, which might be, so that would take 2026. Then at the earliest, we could start construction of those services in 2027. Servicing of the site would take most of the summer. You could have potentially the plan of subdivision registered in the fall of '27. When you register that plan, that is what then allows us to transfer the roads and the park to the municipality. It allows us to sell lots. So the earliest you would see that, in my opinion, would be late '27 or perhaps 2028.
So building on the site of homes in 2028?
Yes.
And estimation on completion, obviously it would be based on sales, but what's the market saying right now?
Market right now is nonexistent, so, you know, these things come in cycles, and, you know, Mr. Halleck has done this before. He knows that this will cycle around, but obviously, no one's going to put millions of dollars worth of servicing into the ground unless they're confident that they can sell lots. So I don't have the crystal ball. I'm hoping that by 2028, the housing market is strong again and that he can go ahead and start building.
Can you just make clear for me your position on the construction access through the sewage treatment plant?
So, yes, that's a very interesting discussion. So this has been something that's been asked for by the neighbors, and Mr. Halleck has agreed to do that, because he realizes it's of importance to the neighborhood. My fear in all honesty is that this becomes something that Norfolk County has as a standard going forward. If I could actually get the clerk to put up my PowerPoint presentation again, and if they go to the very last slide in the presentation, that would be a really good reference. So in some circumstances, it is possible at low cost to create a construction access. In other times, there is not possible. So if, for example, if you go from this subdivision, if you go down Deco Road, just a short way to Dream Villas, they are doing their last phase right now, which I believe is around 80 units, and the only way to access that is to drive through the existing subdivision. And we see this over and over and over again. And while it does inconvenience the neighbors, it is, in some cases, a fact of life, and it just has to be tolerated. it just has to be tolerated. What you see on your screen here is a plan that Weston Consulting did for this area. And where I've highlighted in purple, that is the land that is now actually owned by Liberas and Live Developments. This is not their plan. This is a plan, I don't have access to their plan. This is one that Weston Consulting did a long time ago. Those two purple lines presumably are first phase, because that is, those purple lines are where they need to connect to our subdivision to get servicing for sewer and water and to make the connection to Donley Drive at the bottom of the, or, sorry, to Deco Road at the bottom of the plan. If you consider that those purple roads are built as their Phase 1, then I put it to you, how do they service the balance of their site? Look at the area between the purple lines without driving on the purple roads? I recognize that it is an enormous inconvenience for people to have construction equipment drive through an existing subdivision. I've lived it before. We all have. The people who live in Woodway Trails, the last phase of that was constructed by driving through the earlier phases of Woodway Trails. So, in this particular situation, we have an opportunity to make that connection to the sewage plant at reasonable cost to the developer. He has agreed to do that because he's heard the outcry from the neighborhood. But I would suggest to you that sometimes this is feasible to do this for land development, but sometimes it is not. And I would really caution council to take the attitude that this is a new policy, that we always require this, because as in that example, which is not my design, that's Weston Consulting out of Toronto, you can just see that it just can't be done in some cases.
Thanks for that. I take what you're saying. I guess I would say the access into that subdivision is not wonderful to begin with. And so, it gets even harder to make that case that there wouldn't be another access when you're, it twists and turns like crazy just to try and get there through a bunch of houses. Can you just touch on, is there sidewalks included? It's hard to see in the drawing, but presumably, yes?
Yes, we don't show sidewalk on our draft plan, but the county has standards and will obviously comply with those. Yes.
Perfect. And the parkland is as part of Phase 1A and B, correct?
The park, the parkland, yes, is included in Phase 1A. So, we wanted to make sure that it was in the very first phase that we do, so that it could provide service to the existing residents as early as possible. We didn't want it deferred into Phase 2, where it could be, you know, 10 years away from happening. So, yes, it, that entire green space node, if you will, in the northwest corner is in the first phase of development.
That's all. Thanks very much.
Counselor Vary.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Valley. John, you mentioned, so, traffic's come up a lot, but we haven't really had a full picture of the traffic, I don't think, today. Can you, I guess where I'm confused a little bit is where your traffic study differs from the county's point of view. And I was wondering if you could sort of take us through that, why, why there's a difference and what sort of the developer's point of view on that is?
Sure, thank you. If we could back up the slide presentation to a slide that looks like this, there's a little map and a chart, and it's called Donley Drive Capacity up at the top. It's roughly in the middle of the presentation. One more, I think. There it is. Okay, so, we have done a bunch of traffic studies here. We've had two different consultants on the file and a bunch of amendments and so on. But what I want to talk about is this particular slide. So, on the right hand, there's the map, right? And the blue area is what's already approved, it's already built, that's where people live today. That's the blue. The green area is Mr. Halleck's land, this proposal. The purple is the area owned by Live and Mr. Liberas. And the red down in the corner is Calabrecks, the hubland. So, our last traffic study looked at three different scenarios, specifically with traffic on Donley Drive. So, scenario number one was the green area only being, all the, they all include the blue, of course, because it's there. The first scenario talked about just the green area, just our development, and it looked at Donley Drive, and it said, okay, we're going to have a little over 5,000 cars a day on Donley Drive. That was, that's the number. Then, scenario number two said, what if we have the green area and the purple area and the red area all developed? And what if we have connections to Donley Drive and Deco and Ireland? Then, what does the traffic on Donley Drive look like? And it goes up a little bit to 5,800. Then, scenario number three was, again, the blue, the green, the purple, the red, all developed, and all those same accesses plus a road to Victoria Street. And that resulted in just under 5,000 cars per day. Our traffic consultant, he believes, and this is where there's some differential in opinion, our traffic consultant believes that because Donley Drive is dedicated as a collector road, identified in your official plan as a collector road, that has a capacity of about 8,000 cars a day, your staff think that number should be maybe more like 6,000 cars per day. But regardless, there's, the question comes as to, in these various scenarios, is there capacity on Donley Drive to accommodate the development as a block? Not just our land. Our traffic study isn't just looking at our land, it's looking at the entire, somehow we, somehow we've got sucked into doing a traffic study for our neighboring friends at our client's expense, but nonetheless, we've looked at that whole development node. So, given that we don't hit that 6,000 cars per day, our position has been that Donley Drive has capacity. However, we're hearing a lot of pushback from staff, we're hearing pushback from the neighbors, we're hearing pushback from all these people. So, we're saying, let's just back up the bus, let's not dine the cross for this one, and let's just agree that we will only develop Phase 1 going to Donley Drive, and that before we do all this other work in Phase 2, that we would add those other entrances, which would probably result in Scenario 3, which is Donley, Deco, Ireland, and Victoria. But of course, that requires cooperation of the other landowners, of Live and Calabrecks. So, this is where we're trying to reach some compromise on between what the science of our, our traffic study says, less than 6,000 cars a day, and the capacity of Donley Drive. Instead of having that challenging discussion, we're just backing off and saying, let's just do Phase 1. And then, we'll worry about, when we go to do Phase 2, we'll have to add in these other, these other connections, so that we don't even come close to overloading Donley Drive. That's the, that's the gist of our discussion. I hope that answers your question, Counselor Vary.
It does, yeah, that's much clearer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Brunton.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. This is really what I wanted to see, was the slide in front of us. And I think, John, it's very clear to me, but I only have one question. The 8,000 AEDT on Donley, is that from Victoria South only?
So, the 8,000 is what Paradigm, our traffic consultant, says is the capacity of a collector road.
So, that could be.
So, Donley is a collector road, I believe, Mr. Lambert might correct me, but I believe it's a collector road all the way from the Queen's Way, all the way to its south end.
Could be, could be. I'm not, I'm not up to date on this stuff. So, the 8,000, and my question would be, with the other development on the corner of Victoria and that, will there ever be a need for a stoplight? Does your traffic study look at that?
At which intersection, I'm sorry?
Victoria and Donley.
Victoria, Donley does not warrant it within our traffic study. We look out to, I believe it's the year 2044, and that warrant is not there at 2024. That doesn't mean it won't ever be, but not within the scope of our study.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Valley? Counselor Graham Basson.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Talked a lot about the traffic, and the solution comes with cooperation of three different properties. Has that same discussion been had with water and sewer? Because I'm pretty sure, if I look at the same map, that water and sewer lines, I know where the sewage treatment plant is, and I know where Calabrecks' property is, and they probably got to cross your property to get there. So, are you having the same discussions of upsizing some pipes and doing that ahead of time as well?
Absolutely. That will all be part of the discussion, and you're absolutely right. Calabrecks and Live need to go across Mr. Halleck's land to access sewer and water. Mr. Halleck's land can't develop until they build roads. So, there's got to be some, I'll scratch your back, you'll scratch my back, coming out at the end of the day. We do notice there's a comment in the staff report about taking that road allowance that would connect to the Live property at our first phase. We would be highly opposed to that. I think that that, that kind of arrangement needs to be something that's in the agreement and the negotiation between the land developers, and is part of that discussion as to how that happens. But suffice it to say, all the parties in this discussion, Calabrecks, Live, and Mr. Halleck, are all highly motivated to reach an agreement, because without each other and without agreement, none of them can develop their properties.
So, now I'm going to give you the chance to explain to me why this council shouldn't just say no to this one until you've figured all those other ones out.
Well, I suppose you could. You could do that. The provincial policy and the Planning Act say that we're supposed to have a decision from council within 120 days, and we're, we're well past that. At our last January meeting, there were people here, you know, sure that we were going to be here in February with an appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. We haven't done that. We're trying to work with the neighbors, we're trying to work with council, and come up with a recommendation and an application that addresses all of those things, and we think we have found it, and that let us go ahead with Phase 1, and then put those conditions on Phase 2, that they can't go until these matters are resolved.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, I'm being a bit facetious there, but you're making headway, so, and I think our staff are making some headway with all of them, so we'll keep our open mind here yet.
Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, John, we're talking about 165 on-street parking spots. What will each housing unit have for parking? They'll have a garage, I take it, and park in the driveway. How many vehicles would be accommodated in the driveway and in the garage?
You're absolutely right. Every, every unit would have a garage space and one driveway space, so two, and then whatever is available on the street.
And did you get any comments back about the on-street parking 165 spots with respect to snow removal during winter?
I have not seen any comments on that, no.
Do you think it's a concern that should be looked into?
I'm not sure what the concern is.
Well, 165 spots in the wintertime could be a problem with respect to snow removal.
Yes, it could. The goal is always to provide as much on-street parking as we can, because we hear constantly that, you know, people don't use their garage as a garage. They use it as a man cave, they use it as a storage shed, they don't put their car in there, and therefore, they need to park on the streets, and we need to have more street parking capacity, which is exactly why we have gone away from streets with townhouses on both sides, because townhouse driveways are very close together, so you have limited space to park. And we've gone townhouses on one side and single-family dwellings on the other side, so that we increase the amount of parking that is available on the street. So, I, this is what we constantly hear, is we need to provide more on-street parking. So, that is why we've gone to that model of townhouses on one side, singles on the other side, and adding, through the design of the park, 25 more parking spots that would be along the park, which is, you know, unheard of in this, in this size of development.
Okay. And what is the lot frontage on these particular properties?
So, the single-family dwellings, you're catching me off guard. I think the smallest is 11 meters, and they go, they go up from there.
Thank you.
Okay. One question for you, and it might not be entirely fair to ask you, but I figure you'll be in the know. Can you just explain for me, the Live Development Group and the former owner, always partnered? New partnership?
I'm not.
I've never heard of Live before, and last time, so I'm just, I want to see clarification.
So, Live is a well-known land developer?
Sorry, on this file.
On this file. Yes, we didn't know about them on this file till fairly recently as well. We have indication that they have been involved and maybe in the back, in the wings for a while, but we don't know.
Okay. And then, any closing remarks that you feel like you didn't get any time to touch on? And I offer that to you only because my office messed up a meeting with your office, so I apologize for that. We had budget. But is there anything else you'd like to touch on or elaborate further?
I don't think so. I think the message we're trying to get to council today is that we spent the last almost year listening to the community, listening to staff, listening to council, and trying to change our plan so that we can address the comments. And I'm hoping that you have heard that message loud and clear. If council has other suggestions, obviously, we're always welcome to listen to them, but we have been at this for almost two years now, and we would really love to come back to you and see you in December and to get a decision for approval.
Okay. Thanks very much for all that information. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, does that open up any additional questions you'd like to go back to staff to at this point, before we start some of our other deputations? Or are you okay to, it's just pretty, pretty heavy there. Okay, let's move along. We have Carol Calderwood registered for a deputation. Welcome, Carol. You have five minutes for your deputation. I can let you know when you have one minute remaining, and then we can open it up to questions and answers.
Thank you. Through the mayor. Good afternoon. My name's Carol Calderwood, and I live at 337 Donley Drive South. My husband and I purchased our new, brand-new home in Woodway Trails almost eight years ago. With full knowledge that the area behind us was slated for future development, we have no issues with the construction of homes in that area. However, we have always been concerned that up until a few months ago, Donley Drive South was the single entry and exit route into Woodway Trails. If the intersection at Donley and Boswell was blocked, there was no way for emergency vehicles to get in or residents to get out. The Fire Chief's Guide for Development Design, excuse me, recommends two access points for a subdivision of our size as it exists currently. At the community meeting last week hosted by Valley Consulting, we were told that the lack of a second access route into the current subdivision had been an oversight, and that in order to correct this, the development had recently constructed an emergency access road connecting Woodway Trails to Oakwood Cemetery. Frankly, this road is little more than an oversized sidewalk. It's signed for emergency vehicle use only, so it does not provide a secondary ingress or egress for residents. In Attachment C Technical Comments for this project, Norfolk Fire indicated that they were not overly concerned about the proposed emergency access through Oakwood Cemetery. Upon further investigation, I was shocked to find out that this emergency road was constructed without input from Norfolk Fire. Norfolk Fire did not put up the emergency vehicle use only signage, and in fact, they only became aware last week that the road had been installed. And after they sent a staff member out to inspect it, deemed it inadequate as an emergency vehicle access. Further, my understanding from Norfolk Fire is that emergency access, as it exists now in Woodway Trails, is on the low end of adequate. So, with no new routes confirmed, how can 163 additional units be safely and effectively accommodated? I've read through the justification report, the Norfolk County official plan, the traffic impact studies and related documents. I've spoken to various people connected to the project, yet no one can confirm the definite nature or location of the residential, emergency, or construction access points proposed for the next phase of development. There's reference to a temporary gravel road leading towards the water treatment plant, but how it will connect to other roads to provide an alternative access without destroying the natural environment along the trail is unclear. Whether or not it will be made Whether or not it will be made permanent is also unclear. References made to an emergency access around the stormwater management pond, which is currently a pedestrian walkway, but how this will function as an emergency ingress/egress or access route is also unclear. So at the end of the next phase, the only ingress/egress residents in a subdivision of over 500 units can be sure of accessing is Donnelly Drive South. I do appreciate that much thought has gone into this revised plan, such as the addition of usable green space and strategies to reduce on-street parking congestion. However, the application must include a definite plan for safe, adequate, convenient, and permanent routes into and out of the subdivision for current and future residents, as well as for emergency vehicles. I strongly urge council to withhold approval for this application until this is guaranteed. I'm not an engineer, a planner, or a developer, so I'll be the first to admit I don't always understand the language and nuances that appeared in the application. However, I do continue to be frustrated with the difficulty I'm having getting clarification. I've been given conflicting, inaccurate, or misleading answers to many of my inquiries depending on the source consulted. As a result, I'm not confident that the plan as it stands now is viable. I'm here today not because I want to stop the development, just to ensure that the next phase is well-planned and safely executed. Thank you for your attention and listening to my comments.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Carol. Just a couple of comments right off the hop for you. So in the online report that you'll be able to see on the public agenda, it's called Attachment C Technical Comments. All of our reports are circulated to multiple departments for comments, and Fire provided no comments on the public record for this. So unfortunately, all of those comments you shared have not been shared with council. They've not been shared in any official capacity, nor are they on a public record. So I just want to clear that up for you.
I'm not sure I understand you because my understanding in the technical, in the comment section, that they had no concern regarding that roadway into the cemetery.
No comments whatsoever from Norfolk County Fire on this development.
I read it. Technical Section C...
Fire Norfolk County pending comments.
Attachment C Technical Comments.
Yep. There are some engineering comments underneath that. There says Fire Norfolk County pending comments, nothing attached. Finance pending comments, nothing attached. And engineering has some...
Then we must have been reading different reports. Because my understanding when I spoke with Fires that they had been consulted, or that they had been contacted, and they had no problem with the proposal to go through there, but not with the actual roadway.
Yeah, no comments from paramedic services either, so maybe I'll turn it over to our CAO for comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What we do with all of these reports, now that we've heard the feedback from the resident, it'll certainly be incorporated in the report that will come to council and will provide that clarification at that time.
Thank you. And through the mayor, I just want to confirm that what I heard was that there were no comments or concerns regarding emergency access in the technical comments. Is that correct?
Emergency management pending comments, nothing attached here.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Duthy?
Actually, yeah, I wonder if there may be an issue with these scribe. I did flag this last night, but respectfully, Counselor Columbus's did have comments under that, but my version does not. I see the same thing as you see, but Counselor Columbus unfortunately sees something different.
Woodway Trails subdivision, CDS-25042, no comments.
Madam Mayor, when I pulled it up on eScribe, it had all the background documentation from Butternut Drive from a couple of meetings ago, went back to a different link on, and you know, there are fire comments that they're not overly concerned with the emergency access through Oakwood Cemetery, and they have concerns about the stormwater pond. But we've got a little problem in our computer gremlins running around lately, I think, so...
Okay. Thanks for sharing that, counsel. Yeah, mine do not. That attached clearly as a separate attachment, as an addendum to the agenda.
So through the mayor, that, these kind of issues are why I'm concerned, is the information that we're receiving is not consistent. It changed from Phase 1, 2, 3, 4 to 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, so it's very difficult to access that. And we are getting mixed messages from various sources. This is a prime example, that some people get some information, some people do not. And I personally feel we're being misled.
Fair enough, case in point that you make here. It is common for development files to change right up until the night before they come to a public hearing meeting, so council also feels some of your pain on that, but...
But it seems odd that there would be comments in there, and then they would be removed.
Yep. I don't know that it's been removed. I think it's the incorrect attachment, but I see planning staff have a comment behind you.
Thank you.
Just get them to chime in.
Through to you, Mayor Martin, there, I think, is an eScribe issue because when I go to the agenda, I am seeing the comments that the speaker is talking about. So do you want me to read it, just to be clear, so everyone hears?
Sure, if you would, put on the public record, yeah.
Sure. And it is on here, and we did have an issue, Tracy and I chatted with Counselor Duthy last night, that the wrong attachments were popping up, but the agenda that we can see on the public website has the correct information. It says Norfolk Fire, the proposed use of the existing stormwater management pond as emergency access is troubling, as this is a very convoluted way and cannot be cleared maintained in a manner that would ensure emergency access, especially in the winter and during the spring, thought. Is this walkway paved? Is construction, is constructed in a way that would support the weight and width of emergency apparatus? And is there means to clear this path? Are there plans to make a permanent emergency access or just during construction? The Fire Department is not overly concerned about the emergency access through Oakwood Cemetery. So I know Fabian has fall preliminary, public hearing presenting the concept. Further comments will still be received and be included in the staff recommendation report.
Okay, thanks for that. But fair enough, council can't defend a position if we don't have the information to defend a position. So I don't know how council's supposed to champion a development to the public when incorrect information is online. Okay. Thank you for your deputation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Laura Swire. Welcome, Laura. You have five minutes. I can let you know when you have one minute remaining, and take it away whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. My name is Laura Swire. I reside at 334 Donnelly Drive South, Simcoe. I would like to make some observations and express concerns regarding the proposed next phase of the Woodway Trails subdivision. Having said that, there's been a lot of what I want to say covered today, but I'm going to go over it again and perhaps in a different way and say some things that have not been said, so I apologize if this is a lot of repetition. During the January 7th, 2025, public hearing for this development, multiple residents expressed concern regarding the lack of a second ingress/egress for the subdivision. However, the revised proposal still does not include another road. The engineering consultants continue to say the traffic impact studies do not support the need for another road. We are very pleased that the county's planning department does not agree with that position. Page 10 of Attachment C of the staff report, CDS-25-042, outlines how the studies were misrepresented and do in fact substantiate the need for a second ingress/egress. We have also expressed our concern that the traffic studies were conducted during the summer months, thereby not reflecting the typical neighborhood traffic for the other 10 months of the year while schools are in session. We should also recognize that as Lyndale Heights School is already over capacity, there will be additional school buses to contend with. We are aware that both the developer and the county are considering a secondary road leading from the area adjacent to the wastewater treatment facility out to Victoria. We are still of the opinion the road should be from Dacou and not place further burden on Victoria and the surrounding residential area. An additional concern is parking in the subdivision. On-street parking is already an issue. There are a lot of cars parking on the street, often on both sides of the street, making vehicle traffic on the road very difficult, but more importantly, dangerous. There are multiple stories of near accidents. Should parking restrictions be enacted in the area? It doesn't solve all the issues, but just spread them out. The next phase of the development plan seemed to be cramming a high density of homes within a small area, especially with the inclusion of block townhomes. With the limited parking options, we are concerned new residents in the next phases will find parking spaces in the current subdivision. We also note from Attachment C that the archeological, or I can't say it, archaeological study is pending review, and there are a number of environmental questions to be answered. As noted by Carol, we are not opposed to the development, we just want to make sure it is done safely and with the concerns of the current residents considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the deputation? Okay, thanks for joining us. And I believe Jim Swire is our last registered deputation. Welcome, Jim. Five minutes. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Through you, Madam Mayor. My name's Jim Swire. I reside at 334 Donnelly Drive South in Simcoe. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this public hearing committee concerning case number In January 7th, 2025, I spoke at the public hearing committee meeting regarding my concerns with regards in the development, Woodway Trail community being used for movement of heavy construction equipment and trade vehicles. I'm extremely pleased to read in Attachment C of the technical comments, Woodway Trails secondary or second submission comments, traffic impact study, that it is the opinion of the county staff that construction access should not be through the existing built community, and that suitable construction access route through abutting land should be secured. Staff also appreciated that in the past, there may have been construction access through existing neighborhoods, but those past practices pose challenges and concerns for both county and residents in those areas. Staff continue to recommend that these situations avoid the reasonable possibility. Staff remain on the position that suggests to date are reasonable to avoid unnecessary disruption, wear and tear on the roads of the adjacent local road systems. It is my understanding that the newly updated development subdivision, there is a discussion about the proposed construction access route using a portion of the wastewater treatment plant driveway off of Oakwood Ave, east of Sherman Street. We know that there is, St. Joseph's Catholic School is only a few hundred feet east of the driveway of the sewer plant. And in my observation, when I do my walks and speaking on some of the residents in the area, during the school month, September to June, Sherman Street, Oak Avenue, Homewood Avenue, and Potts are heavily congested before and after school with buses, cars, and sewage trucks. I'm asked, why would, in a congested area, would staff consider using this area for traffic through the existing community that's there already? I had the pleasure of speaking to some of the longtime residents in the area of Oakwood and Homewood a couple of days ago, and I was very surprised to find out that only vaguely aware of the pending development. They didn't know anything about it. They knew that the sewer trucks go up and down, and they would not be very happy about the amount of traffic that would come into this area with what's going on now. I do have a question, and I'm just putting it out there, is will the residents in the Sherman and Oakwood Avenue be informed of the proposed construction access? And I'm also wondering if the developer is still in talks with the owner south of the proposed development and is attempting to work out some solution to build a temporary construction road north from 227 to Dacou South, which we've obtained information that there is talks ongoing. There is documentation on record from January 6th, 2025, that 2177546Ontario, Inc., the owner of the land parcel to the south of the proposed development, might consider working with the developer if proper professional dialogue occurs, and that engages all development interests in the corridor of the development.
Just under a minute remaining, Jim.
Thank you. In recent information from the meeting that we had last week with the Valley Group, the question was, did any of the residents in the Sherman, Oakwood, Potts, and Homewood get notified of attending the meeting? And I was informed that they would have been in, either through county, the county would notify them, or it would have been in the paper to notify them that this proposal of the new, the new road was going to happen. At the end of the day, I'm a resident of Simcoe and have no obligations for the proposed development, but as a proud owner, I would like to see the least amount of impact on our community and our environment. Thank you for your opportunity to express my concerns.
Thanks so much, Jim. Are there any questions for the deputation? Seeing none, I can maybe just provide a couple clarifying comments. So you had some questions. It does sound like the developers are all still in discussion, and there's been some ongoing emails. We heard that today. The remainder of the questions I'll leave to professional staff. What will happen for everyone that gave us a deputation today? There will be a pending staff report that will come forward to council, at which point we will be making a decision, and that will have the answers to the questions that were raised today. So to be continued. And as for notifications, yes, the county does do notifications, but just on our public meetings, not the separate one that the applicant and agent held, which is atypical as well. So, okay, thank you very much. Mr. Valley, something to add?
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I just wanted to make a couple of comments based on what I heard from the deputations. Carol mentioned, you know, the single access to Donnelly Drive only. We've clearly stated that, you know, Phase One, we have three entrances there. Carol made a comment that this emergency access was done without any design approval or anything from Norfolk County. Mr. Lambert is sitting right over there, feel free to ask him. There was a series of back and forths on drawings on that access that went through his office and was all approved prior to construction. And I can assure you that the standards for such an access were met, and Mr. Lambert and his group reviewed those and confirmed that for us. We have shown on our plan, we did state it today, that we are proposing that construction access through the sewage plant. I can't, I don't know how I can make that more clear, and that is our proposal, which is before council today. There was comment about the access road around the stormwater management pond. Now that we have committed to not building Phase Two until we have external roads, that access around the stormwater pond is not required. That's off the table. We don't need to do that as long as we're having those access routes to other streets. She talked about the requirement for guarantees, and the guarantees will come when this council approves a draft plan approval that has those 80 conditions of draft plan approval attached to it, which will set out the conditions for approval. We have not seen yet those conditions of draft plan approval. Planning staff is working on them now, but that is where that guarantee will come from that she's looking for. Laura then got up and talked about, you know, needing another road of access. So again, on our Phase One, we have suggested there would be three points of access, and that that is our proposal. There was reference to parking and congestion, and again, I go back to my presentation where we talked about introducing single-family dwellings across the street from townhouses and the 25 spots that we're putting along the park. Jim got up and talked about construction access in the sewage plant and the school. He talked about going down to Dacou. He talked about Sherman. He talked about Oakwood. This is the problem with trying to mandate construction access. It's like going to the fair and playing whack-a-mole. You make this group happy, we don't want traffic going through there. Okay, we'll root it over here. Well, then you're just putting it in someone else's backyard. These subdivisions are in residential areas. You have to drive down existing Norfolk County streets to get to them. What we have proposed in our construction access through the sewage plant, we think is fair, reasonable, and that is why we have made that recommendation. If council thinks there's any other... If council thinks there's any other loose ends that you want me to answer, I'm, I'm here now, otherwise I'll sit down and let everybody go home.
I'm going to open it up to anyone else present in the room or on the line before we move along. Is there anyone here today that like, please, yep, come on up to the podium. Please state your name and your address on the public record. You have five minutes and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Hey, Mayor and Council, my name is Marilyn Claire and I live at 333 Donnelly Drive South. And I just wanted to say I entered into the purchase agreement of Lot 71 and my future home to be built, now referred to as 333 Donnelly Drive South in the March of 2017. At the time, the sales representative told me there would be a paved pedestrian walk around the storm pond and a park for the children to play. When I moved in the following year, neither the paved parkway or the park was done. To date, this remains the same. Our community has some concerns about the original Woodway Trail development and the subject parkland associated with it. We've heard conflicting information about whether the developer paid a fee in lieu of the required 5% parkland or that the payment was requested by council. We'd appreciate a clarification on which is correct. It's disturbing being there for, for seven years and, and hearing this one said this and with someone said that. The nearest, or for several years, our families in the area have had no safe accessible place where children can play, parents can gather. The revised Woodway subdivision now includes a 1.38 hectare linear park at the northwest end of Phase 1A and 1B. While we're pleased to see this green space included, the current plan doesn't provide play structures, swings, basketball nets or a splash pad. The nearest splash pad is nearly nine minutes away by car, which makes it difficult for many families to access. Because of this, we're asking for a guarantee that the new park will include a full range of recreational equipment and amenities once Phase 1A and 1B have been completed, as the city is likely not to assume responsibility for the park until that time. We also understand that although the park will be available for use, sidewalks will come later when the city takes responsibility for the roads. We would like to ensure that safe access to the park is available as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming. Are there any questions? Okay, we will have staff comment on all of your concerns in a future staff report. Is there anyone else present today that would like to speak? Please come on up, state your name and your address on the public record. If there's anyone else waiting, if we can get you ready kind of in the queue there to jump right up, whenever you're ready.
My name is Donna Evans and I live at 292 Donnelly Drive South. Right at the end of Donnelly, there's a little bend for the last block. I'm third house in. When you look at the, this design, the new design, the lots in Phase 1A are only 11.5 meters wide, which is 37.73 feet. Are they going to have double driveways or double garages or just single driveway and single garage?
We will put whatever information we can into a staff report to come back at a future time. I can't keep letting the agent come up because then I would need to let people speak twice. I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to let you. But someone else can bring up your concern if you want to take advantage of this time?
Okay. Why I say this is our lot is 53 feet wide. And what I've noticed, we've lived in our lot for nine years. And now that winter's coming, we've lived through this, the snow coming and the snowplow coming through. What we're finding is there's a propensity for more parking on the road. And what happens is when the snowplows come through, they can't get through. So it piles up, piles up. And when they do get through, we end up with very high piles at the end of our driveway. This design here has shrunk all those lots in Phase 1A, the residential lots to what their original design was. And now they've got these townhouse units across the road. So some of them have six units in it. So you've got six units with 12 vehicles. Do they have room for their 12 vehicles on those lots? I mean, these are questions we have. If we don't have room for when we have 53 foot lots, how are they going to have room when you've got six residences on these condensed lots? Then you add school buses. Because there isn't enough schooling, according to our last meeting in January of 25, the city or the town or the Norfolk County suggested they needed a, a school in this neighborhood. And that didn't come through. So maybe, maybe what we need to do to fix all this is have no parking on all the streets. And that way, everybody will be able to get through the snowplows, the building, whatever. And we wouldn't be concerned about trying to fit through all these cars that are all over the road. I, I went, I went to the meeting the other day with a developer had, and it was very, very informative. Those 25 car spots, parking spots on the green space, that must be something new because I didn't hear that at the meeting. 25 sounds like a lot of car spots, but when you think about all those, those semis that are in, not semis, the townhouses, there's going to be a lot of excess cars on the road. And I don't think those 25 spots are going to do it. I'm just worried about safety. Then add school buses with kids all over the place. And we've got a fair number of school buses now, so it's just safety.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. I apologize, I missed your name at the beginning. Would you mind just restating it for me?
My name is Donna Evans.
Thank you, Donna. Did anyone want to come up and for Ms. Swire and bring up some new concerns? No, sorry, I can't let you come up a second time, but someone else can come up who hasn't You can also provide the written comments before end of day today through to council and planning staff if you'd like. Okay, all right, thank you. Final call, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to this report? And anyone on the line that wishes to speak to this report? Okay, from committee, I am looking for a motion to receive our deputations. We had Mr. Valley. Where's my note? I wrote everyone's names down. Mr. Valley, we have Carol. You have last names? Okay, and then we have both Laura and Jim Swire, as well as Donna and Marilyn. Okay, mover and a seconder please to receive those as information. Counselor Duffy moves, seconded by Counselor Barry. All in favor? And then over to you for staff direction or proposal of an alternative. On the screen before you and for members of the public, it says to receive this report as information and any of your comments to be included in a future recommendation staff report. That is what's on the table. Counselor Duffy moves, seconded by Counselor Van Passen. Debate, discussion. Counselor Duffy, go ahead. Oh my gosh, Counselor Brunton, I apologize twice.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. My, I have no problem with the recommendation, but I just wanted to make a quick couple of comments. One, there was a point in time, John, you may remember this, when Donnelly Drive didn't exist to get into that subdivision. It was, the plan was to go right through Oakwood Cemetery and we certainly turned that down. The second comment I want to make, and I certainly understand the fear these people have with access to a large subdivision. If the peer review comes back and says there's an additional, I'm going to use 3,000 vehicles per day, then I would change my mind. I would change my mind. But I think we're all trying to prejudge something here that based on the traffic, which isn't rocket science. It's, it is a science, but it's in manuals all over the place, how to calculate traffic. And the traffic he has pointed out here doesn't scare me. I think it'll work out for the people in that area. And if the peer review comes back, 3,000 vehicles difference, then I think both consultants need to be fired. How's that sound? Anyways, other than that, I'm, I'm game to go ahead. Thank you.
Counselor Duffy, because I called on you, would you like to provide any comments?
Thank you. I would just say quick, I couldn't help but think about this while I was listening to the deputations and I really appreciate the people that have reached out, both leading up to and that were here today. Mr. Valley talked about the phasing and the timeline that he's likely, you know, we won't see building of actual homes on the site until 2028. And sort of what's coming to mind is, okay, but by that time, we'll probably have a draft plan for the, the rest of the development, probably for the live community, et cetera. And maybe there's a way within that before, you know, the homes are actually having people living in them, there can be some sort of agreement for sure or construction on the road originally began. Just, just in thinking about the, the timing and how it may line up, that was the only thing that was sort of coming to mind. I'd leave that and plant that seed for staff to consider. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Counselor Van Passen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand, I agree completely with Counselor Duffy, but I also remember one comment that the agent made. He could have been, or this application could have been in front of the OT more than a year ago, and they have been kind enough and worked with our staff and worked with the community. I think they've been very generous with their time as well. So, you know, let's keep that going. Sounds like we're getting some movement with the other partners in, in the area. Hopefully we can get it all resolved before the first shovel goes in the ground, but if not, these developers do have money tied up in the projects and the longer we hold them up, the more it costs them, the more the houses will cost. So we try to get it done as quick as we can. These people have been generous with their time as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I would just say I heard Mr. Valley and talk about paying for traffic studies for the entire plan. I know that that's probably a pain, but great job staff on the block planning. That's what we like because that's how we get the questions and answers for folks who are seeking them. However, that being said, I'm actually paid to read these reports and I had a misunderstanding on what was in them. So I can't imagine the frustration of community members who are reading this on their own free time to stay involved in their community and also not have those questions answered. So when the report comes back, all of these addendums need to be attached. There needs to be very clear information on comments, the technical comments that I've misinterpreted on the map. We've heard there's still confusion on the roads. Mr. Valley spoke to it and cleared it up. This needs to be very easy for these folks to digest. They have a lot of outstanding questions. So if there are questions that aren't typically part of planning's wheelhouse per se, but they've been touched on here today and Mr. Valley's answered some of them, then let's get them in writing for folks and work with Valley to make this very clear for the public to digest. And I also want to just take a moment and thank Mr. Valley and the applicant on the changes to the plan because I think my comments were this is one of the most complex files that I've ever seen in my, not that it's a long political career, but close to eight years when it first came forward. And there are a lot of significant changes in here that spoke to public concerns and council concerns. So thank you very much for working with our staff and bringing the file along. Here's hoping December, but no promises. Okay, the staff recommendation is there, receive it as information, future staff report to come to us. We have a mover and a seconder. I've called for debate. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very, very much, everyone, for joining us. Thank you for your time and your contributions. With that, adjournment at 4:44 PM, moved by Counselor Michelli and seconded by Counselor Duffy. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. Have a great afternoon.